Okay, I'll make the motion that we appoint Mike Carter as Mayor Pro Tem tonight.
We have a motion to appoint Mike Carter as Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Linda, second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's get going on our agenda tonight. First thing on the agenda is our prayer and pledge. Councilman Carter can we ask you to do the prayer and Councilman Hewitt to pledge.
Our dear heavenly Father, as we meet as the City Council and members of Payson City, we are so thankful, Father, for the opportunity we have of representing the city and being citizens herein. Father, we pray at this time that the things that we discuss might benefit our city and help the citizens. Please help us have clear minds and make right decisions, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll take note of it. We'll take note of the fact that Mayor Moore is not able to be here tonight. Also, not able to be here is Councilman Phillips and Councilman Welton is long ways away, so in Alabama, so if we do need some time during the course of this meeting to contact him, we will. Otherwise, we'll just proceed as outlined on the agenda. First thing we have on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on that agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hewitt to approve and Councilwoman Carter to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the second item on our agenda will be our public forum. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to address the council? Would remind you to keep it to about three minutes dawn, so don't run too long.
I will not run at all. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I have a curiosity factor. I live in the Maples. And what's that with the water pressure out there? I've got, I was out working on somebody's sprinkling system that lives down at 9:30 last night, and they had plenty of pressure. I come up to my house, and this is about 8:45, 9 o'clock at night, watering my lawn. It's barely half the pressure that it has been in the past even when I turn on the hand and pen watering thing. Were we having any issues that we go up up there?
Travis, do we have anything? I mean, I know we've had quite a demand in the last few days on the system, but we still have plenty of water.
The only difference is if the spring line pumps are on, we have like 115 PSI. If they're not, we have like 60.
It was less than 60.
Don, did you clean your filter?
Yes, I have.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
No, and just, you know, down the hill from me was, was fine. So, this is not something that came on suddenly, but it's something I noticed last night since I was out when my system was on. I didn't know.
What time of day was it, Don?
9 o'clock at night.
Sort of.
All the big places.
During the day, there's just a ton of pressure. I'm not supposed to have my sprinkler on since.
Travis, could we just look into that and see if there was anything special that happened in the last couple of days above and beyond? So we let him know. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else that would like to speak to the council? Yes. If you'll please give us your name and your address. I know where you live and so forth, but this is for the record.
I did not know. Well, my name is April Jones. I apologize. I'm teaching a DAX class right now, so I should've got, been a little more prepared. So I am April Jones. My address is 276 West 1650 South, Payson. The reason for my attendance here is I am on the Scottish Festival Board, and I want to come and invite you all to attend this year's Scottish Festival. It will be on July 7th and 8th, obviously in Payson City Park. The portion that I'm specifically here to invite you to, which you're welcome to come any of the days, obviously, our Scottish Festival is free, open to anyone who wants to attend. There's no admittance fee or anything like that. But on Saturday, the 8th, we have the parade. And the parade starts on the northwest corner of the park, so it's over by the pond. A little, it's down on Main, and it starts just a little bit of the Old North Orchard. We rotate bands and people, which are the clans. You guys would actually be the first of the parade with SAM, so that's a military organization that brings the flag out. So if you would like to attend and be in our parade, we would love to have you. You would need to meet between 11:30, 11:45. The parade actually does not stop until 12 noon. So if you're there at 11:45, you're there plenty early enough to be in it. Now, we also have kilts if you want to wear a kilt. I see that. No.
I know there's a place, probably two of us, that don't want to wear a kilt.
Don't want to wear a kilt. Well, if you do want to wear a kilt, you would come to the registration booth of the Scottish Festival. So that is over on the south side of the bandstand. And we have kilts that were actually made for the Payson City Council. And you could put one of those on and wear it for the parade. You don't need to, but if you want to feel the whole Scottish theme, you're welcome to wear one of our kilts. Now, the question I have is, we're not sure if we're doing enough to invite you. We first of all want to know if does Payson City have its own plaid? Anyone know?
That's a good question.
If it has its own plaid.
Oh, plaid.
Yeah, plaid tartan pattern.
Right.
So I don't know if you have your own plaid or tartan. If so, you know, we could look into getting those and making actual kilts from that plaid tartan. But we're not aware if Payson has one or not.
I don't know that.
Okay, next question is, do you want to participate in any other way? We could allow you to set up a table. We have little booths all around the park. And if you guys would like to have your own table booth, talk to the general public. I know this is an election year, and some of you are, you know, going to be in that election. If you want to come, make your presence known, we can allow you a table. We would just want to know what it does so that we can make sure we had a table for you and chairs and a specific place for you. So if that's something you would be interested in, we just wanted to be aware of that.
Okay, so I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
If, if in fact, somebody wants to do an election hearing on that, at that time, are you suggesting that they have used the Payson table? God, I don't think we can do that.
Um, we just.
So we'd have to contact you to get our own?
Yes. Yes, you could get your own table for that. And the Scottish Festival, a lot of the people are not necessarily Payson people. Most of the people that attend Payson City Scottish Festival are from out of town. Unfortunately, our own residents are not very aware. It's interesting for me. I live in the south end of Payson, and a lot of my neighbors are like, I saw something going on at the park, but they're very unaware. So we're trying to get the word out. We're trying to do advertising to get Payson citizens aware of Payson City Scottish Festival. But we've actually, you know, taken some polls and done some research. And a lot of our people that attend this festival are actually out of town people because it is the only Scottish Festival in the state of Utah that is free. Most of the others charge you anywhere from $10 to $20 to attend. So this is a great thing that we have in Payson, that we have a free Scottish Festival.
You might want to look at putting on Payson Community Voice. There's quite a few followers on that.
Sweet, we will do that. I will make note of that. And is there anything else you would like?
Yeah, I'd like to do the pole throwing, but I want two by fours.
So you want to participate in athletic games? Yeah, a two by four might be a little easier.
Actually, I would love to be there, and I've gone quite a few times, but I'll be out of town.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
Awesome.
And I'll be there.
Great. All right, do you have any questions for me that I can answer or anything else you're interested in?
We'll try to get the message to the rest of the council, but it used to be that that parade was at 9 o'clock in the morning. And a couple of years ago, I showed up at 9, and nothing happened. And then I don't remember what happened last night.
So it changed about three years ago. The general consensus of the bands and a lot of the people, yeah, and those people involved in the games, said it was too hard to host the parade because they're all doing their individual competitions between the hours of 9 and 11. So a lot of the people that are attending, the dancers and the pipe dancers, they also pay to do individual competitions. So we fly judges in from out of state, and they compete in their individual competitions. So as we were having that, that became an item of problem with those people. I personally was for the parade at 9, but I'm still working on getting it back to 9. But at this point, I'm, you know, doing the best with what I'm given, so.
I just want to make sure the rest of the council, anybody else?
I appreciate that, yes, because it is now at 12 noon. And it is only one block. Yep, very short. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to the council to us today? If not, going forward.
I think I'm, I think I'm, there's, there's a spot for me to speak.
Are you here for the?
Roy Herbert, I'm with Kerry the Fallen.
Yes, you're going to be later on the agenda.
Okay, fine.
Anybody else? Not, we'll close the public forum and go to our staff reports. Do we have any reports from staff?
Just quickly to report a few things. We have started our tumbling camp this week. It's going this week. It'll conclude tomorrow, actually, with that one. But we just started this week with that. Also, April already left, but our dance program is dancing in the Stadium of Fire coming up. And so they're excited and preparing for that. So it's fun to have most, well, part of our team members dancing in that program. Just to let you know, we did, we had a few pool closures last night specifically with the lightning. Usually with lightning, we're out of the water for 30 minutes, but there was a series of strikes. And close to closing time, it was between 5:00 and 5:45, so we closed for the evening. And then a week ago, Monday and Tuesday, with the high winds and cold weather, we closed as well, just so you're aware. If something comes up from that. Well, that's pretty much all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor Pro Tem. The first 21 days of June have been pretty busy. We've just cleared over 800 calls in the last 21 days, so we've been, we've been pretty, pretty busy in the police department. Those included 78 arrests, which include 170 offenses. 133 citations was resulted into 172 violations. Three DUIs, 214 traffic stops, and 12 traffic accidents, so some are speeding up already. We continue to get called down to the dump quite a bit for irate customers about our, our covered loads and secured loads. So we're working with Ken, his crew. A lot of them seem to be coming from a different direction than Payson, so we're working with our counterparts to the south to help us with that. Just a reminder, we have the bike rodeo on Saturday from 10 to 12 out here in the parking lot of the city office. So we'll be excited to have you if you want to come and hang out with the kids and ride your bike or not ride your bike. Linda gave me a funny look. Give you a bike, Linda?
I've got a bike.
Oh, okay.
I ran it once.
That's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a bike, but it's stationary in my basement.
You can bring it down and just plug it to the door.
You have to wear your kilt though.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don. Any other staff? Okay, seeing no members of staff, we'll have our council reports. Councilman Hewitt?
I really don't have anything except for one thing, Dave, I saw it down on our marquee that there's, it still shows a work session for last month on, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I don't have any.
I don't have anything either, so that's going to make it fast for that. We have, I don't see any scouts here tonight, so I guess we don't have any scout and attendance certificates. The next item on our agenda is the proclamation for Independence Week, and that is, who's that? Who's going to present that again?
I think somebody talked with Kim to put that on the agenda. But what the proclamation is, is encouraging people to shop locally owned businesses. And I think they have the Independent Business Week, which is July 1st through 7th. So that's what they're asking that the council would adopt the proclamation, have the mayor sign it.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt that proclamation?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the proclamation for Independence Week and also just encourage everybody to shop locally because that's a sales tax, is one of our ways that we have to fix roads and things like that, so. If you go to Provo, they get to fix their roads, so anyway, just encourage you to shop local.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I think this is going to be pretty easy most of the night, though. Hope so. Okay, then we have a second by Councilwoman Carter. We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I forget to vote.
Any vote.
Okay. Our next item is the presentation of Kerry the Fallen. Mr. Herbert, we'll let you come up and present to us.
I'd like to show you this. That's part of the presentation. Maybe I could just put it here and you can look at it.
Okay.
This is the, this is the Kerry the Fallen we did in.
If you would go over to the mic so that we can have it recorded.
All right. Let me pass these out. My name is Roy Herbert. I'm from Elk Ridge. And we're doing a Kerry the Fallen in, in conjunction with our city celebration on Friday. We're going to be part of the, we're marching as part of the parade that goes for a couple blocks. And then we're going to continue marching all the way down to the State Center for a 2.7 mile march, which would be nice at 6:30. Won't be too bad. But any rate, those pictures there are from the Kerry the Fallen march we did up in Ogden on May the 6th. On May the 6th, Catherine and I went up there and we marched. There were 62, 62 participants in that, in that march. And so the purpose of the march is to raise funds to relieve the veterans' suicide rate. Is everyone here familiar with the veteran's suicide rate? It's 22 per day nationwide. And I was on the internet today, and I was shocked to learn that Syrian refugees get more money per month than our veterans when they return from their service, which is, I'm sorry, but I don't know how you make sense out of that. At any rate, that's the purpose of the, of the march. And so if there was a question as to why, why should Payson do it? Or why should any city do it? The answer is, the difficulties faced by veterans when they return from PTSD and all of the other experiences that they've had needs to be addressed. And so why, why wouldn't Payson be willing to step up and provide some kind of effort to raise awareness of the veteran's suicide rate and address that? Of course, if you do, if we, if you do decide to be involved in it, it would be expected that members of the community would want to make some donations to carrythefallen.org or activeheroes.org, either one of those, either one of those websites. And the difficulty with that is those programs are not local. But I'm, I just, I just had a meeting this morning with the county at the county building, and I'm trying to identify some local programs that Payson could participate in to raise funds to relieve this tragedy on a more local basis. But I haven't gotten that information yet. So that's my presentation. I'm hoping that the good folks of Payson will support it. If you wanted to, if you wanted to make it a part of your parade, I think that would be a good idea. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions for you, Roy. I think that I want to thank you first of all for making the effort as volunteer to do something that's important. So do you have, did you want to try to spearhead something as Payson, or do you want us to take it and run with it, or what?
I don't, I do, I do not mind working with whoever wants to work with me to make sure it happens. Do I want to do it all by myself? No. But yes, I would be willing to, in fact, I will do all the interaction with Active Heroes. I've already done it for, for Elk Ridge. I've been working with them, and so I can, I can do all of that. But I wouldn't need help, for example, I would need help with whoever you want to be involved in terms of within the community, I would have to have someone working with me directly from the city.
So could you leave your phone number here with us?
Yes, in fact, I have, I have.
I got it.
Okay.
Yes, and I have some, in fact, I have, let me give you my, let me give you my business card.
Because I'd like to see if we can find a few volunteers, and then I think maybe we ought to try to do something in the parade. I think it's a worthwhile cause, so.
Can we contact DNE and see what they need to do to get our entry?
Are there any other questions? No, I forgot to tell you. What we do in the, it's called a rock march. In fact, if you've been in the, in the service, if you've been in the Army, you'll be familiar with that. Basically, what everyone does is they put on a backpack with some weight. The purpose of the weight is to remind them of the burdens that the veterans carry, okay? And so what I've suggested, and what we're doing up in Elk Ridge, is I've asked everyone in the march to put in some candles or other perishable, non-perishable food items that can be collected after the march and taken to a veteran's specific food concern. Any questions? So what, so you'll get, you'll get in touch with me if you're interested in doing this? Is that, is that my understanding?
I think we're, at least I would be interested in trying to find some volunteers to work with you to,
Okay.
to do something in Payson. I think it's very important we have the veterans home here in Payson. I think we need to do something.
Right, right. And if we wanted to do, if we wanted to make that part of the parade, we're putting it on first in the parade up in Elk Ridge. We'll be the first. In fact, I was told the other day that we're going to have a full holiday flag that we're going to be carrying. And then we're going to have a color guard that will lead the parade. So I think that that would be a nice addition to your parade. And what's the date of your parade? The 8th?
Are you talking about our community parade? That's in September.
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 So that might work also. Anything else?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Ray?
Well, thank you.
Ray?
Yes?
I, I'm representing the Community Voice, the blog on Facebook. I'd like one of those cards so we can put some information.
Oh, sure. Oh, and I also should have told you, I put in an article in the Payson Chronicle. Did any of you read the article? It was on the second page, took most of the page. It was about the Elk Ridge March. So I would do that for, I would do that again for, if you decided to do something, I would do another article that we could put in the, in the Chronicle. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item is discussion on Utah County's Resource Management Plan. Commissioner Lee, I believe, the time's going to be yours for this?
Commissioner, you aren't going to read that whole thing, are you?
One by one.
No. Especially if I have to do it in a kilt, right? Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members, thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk a little bit about the, the resource plan and management plan that we, that we have, and we have it in draft form. Probably before that, though, I'd like to, could we have a motion that the City Council has to wear those kilts and ride bikes? I'm going to favor that.
I don't think you'll get a vote of three, so.
You were going to run, Don, now.
Yeah, are you? And also, I noticed the bowl that you have out there that's been decorated for the county fair, and it looks fantastic. I took two pictures, so I can take it back and show, show our people who are there. They had a board being, being tonight on the county fair, so thank you for participating in that. So with the, the Resource Management Plan, I'm hoping that you received an email on this. So you've got the 120-page document.
In our, in our pack.
In your, in your pack, and very good.
One, one thing I was wondering, if you're going to give out copies of those to like council people and?
On hard copy form? Uh, no, we were kind of hoping that the electronic would be sufficient. It is a draft form, so it's, it's, my, my goal is to incite you enough that you'll look down through it and then give us some comments back so that you can, you can say, like this, don't like that, change this. That's why it's still in draft form. And as, I'm not going to go down through the whole thing and read it, but there are a few things I'd like to point out and maybe give an example of why we're, why we're doing this as, as a county. So if you have that, and as you know, there are about 28, 25, 28 different areas that we're looking at. And in particular, this is just on public land. It is, it is not on private land or anything like that. It's just the public land that we're, that we're looking at. And you can see where it has land use, economic considerations, agriculture, irrigation, land access, land enforcement, grazing, mineral resources. So the goal is, is that we can put this all together and then stitch together with all the other counties throughout Utah. And then the, the state would also be able to implement this and have this as part of their statewide, statewide plan. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things and then give you an example of why we think it's, it's important for us. Again, we've put a lot of work into it. We've hired some consultants to help us gather the information and put it in a digestible form so that we can look at it. It is, it is set up so that when you start, like on any of these, any of these areas, it has definitions, it has related resources, best available information and sources, findings, and then probably the most important is that we have policies and desired management practices. And I know you have copies of them. I would love if the, if the public wanted copies. I don't know how you could get that, put it on our website or you can contact our office. We would like to have the public participate as well in that, in this discussion. So under the land use one, just on an informational basis, when it talks about findings, it says Utah County, in Utah County, 42% of the land is private. 40% is public, that's BLM and the Forest Service. 14% is various state land, and 3% is wilderness. So that's kind of, you know, it gives you a sense of, of what we're looking at. In particular, we're looking at that 40% that is public. And we're looking at finding ways to say, this is how we, as Utah County residents, would like to see this land managed. There is some, there is some state, not state, but federal statute that is in our favor. And that is, is that anytime the federal government on public land like this wants to change their resource management plan, it says they're under the NEPA process or the FLIPMA process, that they have to coordinate with the local agencies, which is designed to be the county's. And so if we have a plan in place, then that means they will come and participate with us. If we don't have any policies or any direction in place, then they do not. They don't have to come forward and say, hey. And I, and I want to give you an example of that, and I, I think it's a, and it's, it's an example that we just recently went through. As you may be aware, on the other side of the lake, there was a lot of shooting activity going on. We've had fires over there. We've had a lot of activity. And, and so the, the county commission, before my time, engaged BLM and others and said, hey, we've got a problem. How can we solve some of this problem? And see if we can find a way to, to solve this problem. One of the proposals that we put forward was, how about if the county was to put a, a shooting range out there? See if we could alleviate some of those pressures. We went through a process back and forth with BLM, and eventually they titled to us 160 acres. That was BLM land. Now it is in county control, which we are in the process of making a, a target shooting range. Now, in doing so, they also temporarily shut down to, to target shooting in that area pieces of ground, which made sense because it's illegal to shoot across a road, and it's illegal to hit somebody's house, which was happening. And so they, they shut down a piece of land there. They said, no, no target shooting in this area. Well, then, now this is where I, I came into office and we continued on this process. And they decided that the temporary process of shutting down land, it can only last for so long and before we have to change, because they can't leave it on temporary status forever. So they engaged us and said they would like to, to shut down more land for target shooting. And, and they gave about a 6,000 to 8,000 acre swath there, and that's not even counting SITL land that they were looking at shutting down. Well, when we looked at that as a county, on a county perspective, we had some heartburn about that. We like to have open access to, to the land as well. But we understand the public safety and we understood that sliver that they had carved out. So we engaged them in a process and SITL in a process. And they designated us, Utah County, as a coordinating entity in this discussion. And that's what this document ultimately is supposed to do in the future, is allow us to have those kind of conversations with these federal partners. As we went through it, there were two groups that were diamatically opposed to each other. One was the shooting community. They want everything open. The other one was the petroglyphs. They wanted to protect everything. We have, by, by law, we have to protect those sites. On the other side, we like to have it open as much as possible as well. They were hitting each other head-on, and we had conflict going on there. And we were caught in the middle of it with Utah County, the BLM and others. As we worked down through that area with lots of open dialogue and many public meetings and lots of hand wringing back and forth, they came to us and said, what, what would Utah County like? And we helped carve the map back down and said a couple of things. One, we have to protect the petroglyph areas. We know where they're at. That should be a protected area. You know, so we don't have target shooting, because they were hitting them and destroying them. Second, we said that, that target shooting is usually off of a road. I don't know very many people that take the sandbags and all the stuff that they have and backpack it up two miles into BLM to sit down and plink, you know, shoot targets. They're going to usually do it right off of a road, close to a road. So we carved back some of the areas where they're making these big, huge swaths of shutting down target, target shooting. We got both communities together to talk about this issue. And ultimately, when the decision came out that we supported, both groups did not oppose it. That's where I think that we have the better opportunities as we go down through and have local governments and your government included as well as you touch some of these lands when it comes to fires, grazing, how they can, how can, how they can work together so that we don't have these kind of fires right on our borders. And, and that's what this document is about, is trying to get to that. So I, again, would encourage you to look down through it. Email me if you have any questions or concerns. We have to adopt something by August 1st of this year. And, and that way, it'll go to the state and it'll continue along the path. So are there any questions that you have for me? Any questions from the council?
I don't have any. Thanks for coming.
You bet.
Give me some good reading.
Yes, the policy portion is probably the most important part of it. So there's just findings. Well, thank you again for, for having me tonight, and I will, I'm sure you have lots of feeling. I don't need to sit through the whole meeting. I have a baseball game I'd like to get to with my son, so I think I'll, if I could, I'll just excuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our public carriages of action items section. I would entertain a motion to allow the Mayor Pro Tem to adjust the order of our items as, as I direct.
I'll make a motion if the Mayor Pro Tem can adjust the agenda.
I'll second that.
All of us in favor? Aye, okay. What we'd like to do here is first entertain a motion to open the public hearing for both the enterprise fund transfers as well as the adoption of the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. After that, we will then have our amendments to the Payson City fee schedule discussed. So Sarah?
Um, oh, do you need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for those two items.
We have a second.
I have a second.
All of us in favor? Aye.
Okay. All right, so who adopted a tentative budget in May? If you remember. And we. Okay. So I'm just going to highlight again our budget for maybe those who weren't here when we adopted it in May. So just bear with me as we go through it. Most of it is going to be just to refresh your memory of what we adopted. There was some changes from what you adopted in May, but I have a spreadsheet that will show you the differences that we've made in there. Okay, so here in our budget highlights, we did balance the budget previously without a property tax increase and without CPI increases to the utility rates. But we discussed that we wanted to increase the utility rates by the CPI index for the consumer pricing index as we've done. So I put them in, except for electric. Yes. So everything but electric. So that's what we have proposed tonight later on when we talk about the utility rate fees. And this is just a general summary of the total expenditures that are spent in each different type of fund. You can see our general fund has $11 million, $1.8 million that we spent on their capital projects. That's where our master plan is budgeted for, so we can keep track of that, which we sold out many. So you can go down the line and see what each department is spending, give you an idea of what type of budget we're talking about. This gives you a breakdown of where the money's spent. You can see 37% is on upgrading, 30% is on personnel, 11% on capital, 6% on debt. Indirect services, that's what we charge for the overhead charges. So for the accounting software, it doesn't hit the enterprise funds. We have to charge it back. So that's what those service charges.
Could I ask a question? On the debt service, 6.8%, how do we compare to other communities as far as what we, do we know?
I, I don't have any idea. It varies across the board. We don't have any GO debt, general obligation bond debt, which is great. That means we're not using our property tax to cover any debt, which is good. So I don't, I don't know how we compare to other cities.
I was just curious, because a few years ago I had heard, I know you and I, Dave, were in a meeting with Science Bank, I think, at one point. They mentioned that, but I can't remember.
Science had, Science had prepared a chart a couple of years ago. We could ask them again if they provide that same chart, but we don't have that information.
Yeah, I'd be just curious and would like to know.
I would say that we're probably higher than sewer and water. Our debt ratio is probably higher than other organizations. Our general bond debt, though, I would say we're above. Electric doesn't have any debt. But our water and sewer, that's where we're probably out of debt, I would say.
Yeah, one thing about not having general obligation bonds is that can be a blessing, but it can also be a hindrance, because some of our financing should have been that way.
Yeah, absolutely. Like the bowl, we probably should have done that as a general obligation bond, but we used those tax dollars to on that. So you're absolutely right. Okay, so we, in the budget, we have the wage increase that was started in 2015. We've hired Melanie. She's the new HR director. And she's been looking at our wages and trying to get us back to where we need to be. I know that it's a continual process. Cities are continually upping their wages, and we're trying to get to where we need to be. We have people that work here 30 years and they're not even at midpoint yet. So we're trying to compensate our employees fairly. And this isn't just a rate that is going to be given. It's still based on performance. So it's not just, here you go. We still expect the employees to perform and work for that. But it's about a $332,000 increase with the health insurance. But we only had a 2% health insurance increase because we changed the type of network that we offer. We don't know, we don't have IHC in our plan now. We just have the Mountain Star Network in our plan. That's how we saved that huge increase. So we're trying to balance that, offset that. Okay, so here's the differences. I lowered the overall tax revenues. I went through and analyzed them. Once again, they decreased the intergovernmental revenue. I just decreased that as well. Charges for services, there was cemetery fees. I had them pretty low. But after looking at this year's budget, I raised those. So that's where those come in. Our fines for forfeiture is the same thing. Our court has come in a lot higher than what I can budget it. And then indirect services, as we increased the general fund, that automatically goes through based on the percentage. I have it set up in a formula base. So anytime I increase an expense in administration, it flows through to the other ones that are charged those expenses. So that's why it increased on that. But those are the differences from what you've adopted so far. And then here's the, there's probably too small for me. Can you see that? Okay? I don't know if I can make it any bigger. But, so they count from Mayor's budget. It increased 25,000. That's right, it's been a branding study in case you guys decide to do it. We can pull that out if you decide you don't want to do it. I know you mentioned someone came from UBU that maybe might have a better option that might be cheaper. So we can pull that out and leave it in and give us an option?
Well, one thing, there's two different things we were looking at. One was a branding study, and the other was somebody just come in doing analysis of the city itself. So there are two different items.
So that's the analysis of the city, the 25,000. Okay, sorry, bad terminology. So that one's in there. We had $15,000 for carpet in the, this, in the maintenance budget. But because we moved $100,000 in there to help with renovation, I took that out. So I figured that could be part of that budget. Figured we didn't need that in there. And then, this is going to seem weird to you, but bear with me. It's accounting stuff. So every year when I prepare the journal entries to get ready for the audits, I have to accrue back any payroll that is paid in June that people worked in June, but is paid in July. So to get it to accrual basis, I have to charge those back. And then I have to do the entries that I did the year before. And I budgeted 10 hours out of 2080 to get me there, but I increased it to 20 because I've got a difference. So that's, you're going to see some minor differences. That's what it is. I changed it from 20 hours instead of 10 hours, just so I can have that cushion when I make my journal entries. But I'll be safe. So that's the minor differences there. The cemetery, I had $19,000 in there for the road base. But because we did that project this year, we didn't need that $19,000 in there anymore for that road base. In development services, Travis pays our current website provider to provide a GIS service. But we are working to get a consultant, that's a good term for him, an independent contractor. Aaron Wise, he used to work here, and he is going to work on our GIS system. So what we did is because the different utilities are going to be using that service as well, we broke it out between those utility and this one, and it reduced that cost. So that saved us some money there. On the fire, I had missed a calculation for their 457 retirement. Let's see, I missed it in this year's budget. Do I have an extra budget or last year's budget? I know. Ah, I make mistakes. I do it all the time though, unfortunately. But, so that's why that increases about $11,000. So I had to add that in there. That's another big one. Same with police, animal control. Our previous animal control office survey, we're not budgeted with the police retirement rate. It was just the normal rate. I was not aware of that until I looked at our budget this year and realized it was going to be over. So I made another mistake there, so that's why that one's increased a little bit. And then the recreation, because we determined that we wanted to do the additions for the Wilson Elementary for the gymnastics program, they increased our revenue because they reduced the amount they pay out to the instructor. And then we also increased the payment to make that payment. So that's why that increased by $800 or some of that $8,000. And then the swimming pool, we were looking at our city utility service year, and they were budgeted way low. So I increased the city utilities. So those are the differences from what you have adopted. Any questions on that? Lots of information, sorry. Okay, the projects that we've included in here, we have the citywide general plan. We have money to repair sidewalks, $25,000 in our street's budget. We have money for two new speed radar signs. We have money to update the office, the council chamber, whatever we can get in with our $100,000.
The bathrooms.
The bathrooms, yeah. Doug, Doug Bell mentioned to us last week about a crack in the urinal or something. And, yeah, we need to get that fixed. Um, yeah. And then the pavilion, we put $50,000 in, and Memorial Park. And these are all funded by our salmon, salmon and onion days funds that we have not touched. So it's kind of the statements that we've built up that we can use to maybe help our image of our city.
Hey Sarah, can I just, on the pavilion at Memorial Park, in our last council meeting, they, they said, look, the Spanish work building, let's see if we can maybe even do the footing, the foundation and prepare that we can do that. I, I reached out to the plans. I haven't, we don't know if we can get it, because I think the developer probably put that in. But the cost is about half a million dollars. And so we budgeted $50,000. So I don't know if we're going to be able to even do it to where we could put it in in the future. I mean, we tried to hit Sarah up to hit half a million, but... So what we have budgeted, we'll do that one that we showed the pictures of, and that's probably what we're going to have to go with. But I just wanted to let you know, and Seth Ferron's over at Spanish, said he would try to give me the plans. If we could look to see what we could do to maybe future. That's, that's a pretty Cadillac pavilion that we may not be able to do in Memorial Park. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, and then a city analysis, not a branding study, sorry. Bad terminology there. Amazing what terminology and zeros can do, huh, budgets? So our water, we're working on continuing the installation of PI meters. We still haven't heard whether or not, whether or not we have received the ground. I'm hoping we get it. If not, what will happen is it will reduce by 300,000 because it's a match, 100% match. So I put in 600,000, but 300,000 would come from the federal government. If we don't get that, then it will only be 300,000. But anyways, hopefully we'll find out soon. Keep your fingers crossed. And then the second installment payment to connect to Battle of 20. We have one more year of that.
That's what I was going to ask, one more year.
Yep.
And how much is it per year? Couple hundreds, 200? Good.
And then the sewer, we're still continuing to save for the treatment plan upgrade. We have 300,000 earmarks for that. And then if there's any extra, we're trying to just put that away to save for that sort of treatment plan upgrade that is supposed to be done by 2020, but I think we're going to apply for an extension. Is that right?
There are consultants working on that.
So stay can, you know, stay tuned for that to be continued. Jeff has money in there to clean and repair lots of different sewer lines. It helps prevent liability issues that we have with backups. And then the east side lift station over by the box hatch mental health. Hopefully that can get moving forward. The solid waste, a huge, I think, asset to the city will be the compactor. It will help extend the life of the landfill. The ambulance, their revenues have been coming in higher, and so they're purchasing a new ambulance. And then storm, we're dipping in the fun balance so we can get a project completed. It's the, uh, construct a bridge lane, storm retention and pipe and relocate the existing creek at 200 north and 200 west. at two hundred north and two hundred west. So we're trying to get some projects done, slowly but surely. The revolving loan, you've all seen the list of vehicles, if you need, just send that out again, I can. We have the RV park in there and the addition to Wilson Elementary for the gymnastics program. And then the B and C projects, we have the five hundred one overlay, Black Cock and then Sixties overlay repaired. So hint for property tax. A lot of citizens get angry when they see the property tax and think it's Payson City, but you can see only ten percent of their property tax comes into the city. It's very minimal compared to what the school district receives. So I'd like to show this graph just so people can understand. When you get your property tax statement, really pay attention to the different taxing entities and figure out where it's going. Because last year it had truth and taxation, because NIBO did their huge increase, they came here and really needs going to the school district. So property tax is not just Payson, it's all of these entities.
Do you know that NIBO's gonna do truth and taxation this year?
I don't know yet, I haven't heard. So here's where we were last year, 2016's property tax. I use 2016 because we're right in the middle of 2017. I don't know what other cities are doing, but you can see we're in the lower third. And that just gives you a good idea of where we're at within the whole Utah County cities. So I just put it this way, so when we get over here, so we just got the certified tax rate back a week ago. And the rate that they are proposing, because that used to be increased, they dropped the rates to keep the property tax level. So they dropped it to point zero zero one two zero nine. And if we wanted to keep the tax rate the same, which is right below the point zero zero one two eight, that would increase our revenue by sixty-three thousand. And to a homeowner, that would be a ten dollar increase basically. And this is on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home with a market value of two hundred and fifty thousand, but it's only fifty-five percent taxable. So they get a little tax break. But if this was a business, you know, we have to remove that tax break. So really it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred is what this tax is on. Does that make sense? If you want to raise it a hundred and fifty thousand, if you want to generate a hundred and fifty thousand for the city, let's say you wanted to focus on a parking lot, you want to increase part-time wages, you want to focus on a street, if you want to raise money, to raise a hundred and fifty thousand, you'd have to raise your tax rate to point zero zero one three seven seven. Raise it to a hundred and fifty thousand, it would be point zero zero one four eight nine. So if we go back here, you can see that the next highest rate below us is Alpine and it's point zero zero one three eight eight. And this is 2016 rate, so their rate could drop because property values have increased probably everywhere in the city. So we could probably move up a spot if we were to increase it to the point zero zero one three seven seven. If we were to do it the point zero zero one four eight nine, we would be right there between Highland and Orme.
And if we were to choose to do something tonight, we have to choose which, what we want to do.
You guys have to, you guys have to determine, do you want to do a truth and taxation? What happens is we notify the county and say, this is the rate we're gonna do it. If you want to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it doesn't mean that we're gonna do it, it just means we're proposing that we increase the rate to point zero zero one four eight nine. I send that to the county. So when you have your truth and taxation in August, you determine if you want to really raise it that high or lower, but you cannot go above. So whatever we tell them, that's our cap.
That's the ceiling, right?
Yeah, we can't go any higher. So it's up to you tonight to determine the cap. So thinking about the projects that you want to get done that we've mentioned, we have part-time wages that we can't attract anybody to come work part-time because their wages are so low. We have parking lots, the library parking lot, the golf course, our city parking lot. We have streets that can always be repaired. We have parks, you know, we have all sorts of needs for that money, but...
But our tax rate right now is point zero zero one two eight zero, right?
For 2016, but for 2017, it's one two zero nine, yes. Okay, any questions on that?
The parking lot over at the library, if we were to choose that option, how much was?
I've got that on my last slide. Okay, do you want me to skip to that?
No, just keep going.
Okay. Okay, so we went over our utility rates. This is a survey that Provo City does. Like I've said before, I like to use them numbers so people don't say, oh, she's paying funny numbers. This is independent of me, I get their rate, their study every year. They very graciously share that with me. So you can see that the average water cost is forty-nine sixty per month, we're at forty-six thirty-one per month. The average monthly sewer cost is forty dollars eighty-two cents, we're at forty-four thirty-eight, so we're a little bit above average on that one.
But some of those are gonna change, like Provo's gonna go way up.
Yeah, and Provo has, yeah, they have, I think they adopted it a couple of years ago where they have a five-year plan to increase their rates every year because they're so far behind as well. So this average, just like wages, is just probably gonna continue to move up. The storm drain costs, the average is six twenty-two, we're at five forty-three. The garbage can cost is eleven thirty-four, average, we're at eleven oh two. And then electric rates, we are in the highest and the average is sixty-four dollars, we're at seventy-three dollars. So if you combine all of the utility rates and the property tax, we're still below average. We're right in that area. The average is one ninety-seven point seven. And this is the monthly cost to live in these various cities, the average of that, and then we're at one ninety-two a month. So we're not low, we're not high, we're just kind of right there in the middle. And then we talked about their CPI increase. It's kind of a tough guess for me to, you know, to say, okay, what effect will that be on every resident? It's hard to say, so I just took what the average was and times it by two and a half percent to give you what the average increase would be. So you can see, if we went from the current, or from, if we did the CPI, it'd be forty-seven point four seven and the average is still forty-nine sixty-one. Do you see those differences there? Okay, so we talked about, I'll come back to that one. Here are the parking lots that we talked about. With the truth and taxation we did last year, we were able to get some parking lots done. These were Kent's estimates from last year, I believe. So these numbers probably, I don't know how accurate they are, how they are accurate. But we did, the ones up at the top that say complete, we were able to do those parking lots, which I think is great to maintain, is a lot cheaper than to let them get where we are with our city parking lot and try to do a whole reconstruct. But these are the parking lots that are left our city center. He's estimated at a hundred and twenty, library a hundred and eighty roughly, and golf course two hundred and eighty. So we've got some big issues with our parking lots.
What is this, Wells Fargo, is that just the parking lot behind the Wells Fargo building to the west?
Yeah, that part, part of what we own, I believe.
So there's parking lots that we could use a truth and taxation for to help maybe not have three sets of lines and not know where to park out in our city parking lot. I have issues with parking as it is. And then we talked about our part-time wages. So what I did is I just took what we have in the budget currently and if we were to bump everybody up to ten dollars, just to give us an idea. So this is if we were to bump all the wages up to ten dollars, it would be about a hundred thousand dollar increase. And you can see the biggest departments is the swimming pool and the golf course. And that's because they have the most seasonal help, they operate during the summertime. And I know Carl had a difficult time getting anybody to want to apply to be a mower. I know Tracy had the same issue. We had employees that have worked there for years that are still making seven fifty an hour. And we would love to be able to pay those people what they're worth if they've been there more than a few years. You don't give them, whatever it may be, a raise every year to keep them there. Because it's expensive to train people. So those are the two big items that we are really hurting on, that we could use money for, the truth and taxation. I'm sure you guys have others, but these were the two top priorities that Dave and I discussed. We definitely could, you know, have a list a mile long for this city and... But these are the top two, we decided to narrow it down. So that's my presentation. And I've gotta pull this up because we are in the... I've gotta show my... Public hearing notice. So we are also having a public hearing regarding our transfers that we transfer from our enterprise funds. So part of the reason we do have low property tax rates and probably higher utility rates is that we use those utility funds to transfer money into the general fund to keep the property tax low. A lot of the cities do this. I know at Provo, it was eleven percent right out of all the enterprise funds right into the general fund. Because we view it as it's a dividend who, you know, in a normal corporation, you would pay a dividend to the owners and the owners of Payson City are its residents. So that's viewed as a dividend paying back to them, it keeps their property taxes low. Another point with the transfers is I can control my electricity, I can't control my property tax. Whatever I'm billed in property tax, I have to pay, whereas I can turn off my lights if my utility bill gets too high. I can turn on the air conditioner, whatever it may be. And the third thing is schools, churches, nonprofit, they don't pay property tax. So if we increase property taxes to reduce the utility rates, those schools, nonprofit organizations, churches, they're kind of, they're getting the better end of the deal. So I, I think that they're valuable to have. I know there's other opinions on that and I'm always willing to listen to them and, but I feel like these are valuable transfers to the city that help keep the property taxes low.
Is it part of the transfers to cover the overhead of everybody too, part of that?
Yeah, so I have it broke out into two different sections. You can see that there's the amount of the transfer and then there's the amount of the indirect services. So the transfers are just the nine percent, so the percentage of total expenditures, what we do is we take nine percent of the revenue they bring in and so it comes out to be nine point nine percent of their total expenditures. The indirect services, that is, like I said before, pays for the accounting, it pays for wages. They don't have an accountant. I'm their accountant, it pays for me, it pays for our billing system, all the people who deal with all the utility billing, whose electric, water, sewer, they don't have anybody answering, it's the staff out here that comes out of the general fund. So those overhead charges. And they're based on, I try to do it based on a formula. It's really difficult to be able to say, hey, I really spend five percent of my time on electric, I spend five percent of my time on water. I would have to have a million plots to try to keep track of my time. And I just, so it's a best guess, but I can make an educated guess, but we try to be scientific about how we do it.
Okay, any questions from the council on the presentation? If not, this is a public hearing. We invite the public to come up and comment if they would so choose. We'd ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name and your address. And then also, if you could keep it to three minutes, and if somebody else covers what you cover or want to cover, we'd ask Dot to just repeat the same thing over again. But whoever would like to come up and start this conversation, we'd invite them to come up.
Teresa Hyatt, five eighty-six, south twenty-four hundred west.
You weren't sure about that, Teresa?
I've had to learn when you asked. I have a question. What is the income that the golf course brings in?
Where'd Sarah go? She's looking at that. She's right there.
And then another one is on your master plan. How much, how much do you have a budget for that? Is it master or is it the general plan?
General.
It's a general plan.
And so...
It's a hundred thousand.
Okay, so we're just gonna hire somebody or...
For wages?
No.
No, for the master plan.
Master plan.
Is it the general plan, right? So they're gonna come in, where are they gonna get all their information from? I thought we were gonna, like, maybe help them get the information, like, maybe get some kids from the school who have, who have to do this kind of stuff in their, you know, to get their degrees and stuff. Why don't you bring them in and let them, you know, put together, I don't know, maybe...
Yeah, I can see where you're coming from, but I've had some students do different projects and this can maybe be way above what their people are doing.
What I'm saying is, no, they wouldn't do that. What I'm saying is giving the information from all of the people in Payson to get some general information about what they would like to see happen in Payson, so that we're not kind of irritating a lot of people. And what I'm saying is, so we would bring people, these people would, like, maybe send out something on the internet and these people would answer, you know, what they think should happen. And then, and then you have this information that you can give to whoever we hire to do the general plan, so that they're not out doing a ten-hour, ten-dollar-an-hour job and we're paying a hundred dollars an hour to do it. I'm just thinking, I don't want to pay a hundred thousand dollars, I don't want to see us pay a hundred thousand dollars and only getting halfway through the general plan because we didn't do stuff we could have done ourselves that, to give them the information so they can do it.
I think staff is gonna utilize the best they can.
Yeah, I think we're gonna put out the bid to get a consultant, but we will have a lot of input and the staff and other people will probably gather information for them to keep the costs down. The other thing we talked about is we don't want to, I mean, I know the council mentioned, let's get, let's get that going July first, so we can get it going, but I think we kind of need to know where UDOT's going to do that interchange, because I don't want to spend a bunch of money and then we don't know where the interchange is gonna be. So I think we're gonna take it a little bit slow. We've got the money in this budget year, but hopefully we can get some answers from UDOT before we jump in full force. But yeah, I think we're gonna have public meetings, we're gonna have public input and we'll try to gather what we can, but we will get a consultant on board to pull it together.
Yeah, that's, that's what you want, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of people out there that have lots of ideas, even more than a consultant. I mean, he has more experience, but why would we want to bring all those ideas to Payson and then let him put them together? And, you know, hopefully he doesn't go over that hundred thousand.
Agreed.
Okay. Do we have an answer?
Golf course brings in seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
The what?
Golf course brings in seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
What were the expenses?
Nine hundred and twenty. So it subsidized two hundred and twenty thousand, but a hundred and fifty thousand of that is for depreciation.
Okay, so the actual cash is a lot of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing, Teresa, on the golf course, we're gonna try to utilize, utilize that a lot more for economic development. We're gonna have, one thing we're gonna have is a tournament to bring people in from EDC Utah Go Ahead in the fall. So we're gonna try to use that a lot more to promote Pace and to make up for some of those costs.
That's what I'm trying to find out too.
And there are a lot of people that use that golf course from out of the area.
Well, I just glad to see you're building that little thing for the gymnastics. I was happy about that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to come address the council? Going once, going twice. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion, we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Hewlett to have Councilwoman Carter second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay. So we need to make a decision now.
Yeah.
We either need to adopt the budget as it's been presented to us and as I understand it, by law, we have to have that all done by tomorrow, so we'd have to do something tonight. Or if we choose to have a property tax hearing, a truth and taxation hearing, then we need to specify the rate that we would be interested in going for the ceiling rate.
The revenue that you would like to bring in. And then I can calculate, put it in from there, but yeah, I need the revenue cap.
So we have any conversation, discussion from the council?
My thinking on the truth and taxation is, is that we just don't fall farther behind. And so my thinking is, I know it'd be nice to have more money and maybe I'll look at something sometime to put on the ballot or something for other things, but my thinking is just keep it at the same... is just keep it at the same rate it was for last year, so we aren't falling farther behind. So I, my thought would be to do the .001280, and that'd be about $65,000, but it's not raising the mill levy, it's just keeping it where it is. But that's my thinking.
How much of a raise would it be in the property tax?
For what?
If we raised it the next level?
So, if we went to the 150,000, to raise $150,000, it would be about a $23 increase annually to the homeowner that has a house value of $250,000. So taxable value, 137,500. Our wages for our part-timers, it was estimated about $100,000, and our parking lots, you could see the list was long, so...
I think one thing we have to keep in mind, too, is that we have two councilmen aren't here, that, where they might come in when we actually, when we're all here, too, so...
Well, you can obviously, just because you set the cap doesn't mean you're gonna adopt that. That, 'cause if, if you set it at 60, this, I'm not telling you what to do, just bringing up a point, if you set it at the 63,000, you can't go any higher. But if you do it at 150,000, you can always go lower. So this doesn't mean we're adopting this rate, this just means that's what's gonna go out on the property tax notice.
Well, I'm with Councilman Hewlett as far as adopting. I think that's a reasonable thing to do, is to try to keep that rated, that 1280.
Okay.
I think we can maybe scrounge up some money somewhere, or make less of a raise if we choose to do it for...
Right.
'Cause we can, we, we, several years ago, we knew, knew we had to come up to the midpoint on our employee raises, and we knew we couldn't swallow it all at once, so maybe we do it apart sometime.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a question for you. Um, since we're almost into the budget year, how much excess do we have over expenditures? Of, you know, we had the budget, and we, did we bring in more than we thought we would, so we haven't spent it all? How much do you think are we gonna go to the general fund that we didn't spend this year?
So, I was looking at that yesterday. I have my spreadsheet that I project, and it's about 150,000 is what we're going to dip in to fund balance, which is a lot better, 'cause we have dipped in for Boiler, which was 180,000. We dipped in for 250 for the cemetery roads, and then 60,000 to finish the tini. So, yes, our revenues did come in a lot better than what I had budgeted last year. And that, I'd rather budget conservatively, so then, definitely we have that cushion to make sure we're not overspending.
Any further questions or comments?
So, so we would need a motion to, the resolution that's in your packet is to...
Do we need two separate motions, or can we make them...
I, I think you can make the motion that we, that you're scheduling the, to the taxation hearing for August 2nd, and that you're adopting the intended budget, is it...
As presented, uh-huh.
That's presented.
That's all within the...
That's all within the resolution, is it?
Resolution. The amount, um, you can do by just a motion, because we haven't put that amount in yet.
What about the transfers?
Transfers.
Um, there's a resolution for that also, I believe.
So, there's two separate resolutions that we need to adopt?
Uh, oh, let's see, the transfers from the enterprise fund is a public hearing, those are already in the budget.
Yeah.
There's not a, a resolution regarding those.
It's a new law that they wanted to have a public hearing for that, so there's no motion or actually required on that, just gives people a chance to come in and talk about those transfers.
So we're adopting a tentative budget with, with the truth, truth and taxation, certainly?
Yeah. And then it's part of the motion, just put what, what amount there you wanna...
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the tentative budget for 2017-18 with a truth and taxation hearing on August 2nd, with the, doing a proposed tax rate of .001280.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. This would be a roll call, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, we'll have a roll call. Brian?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have approval of that motion. Okay, the next item on the public, the agenda then will be the resolution concerning the amendments to the Payson City fee schedule.
So, so mayor and council on that, we did bill Ken as the budget to you, who, that you just went through. We did add the CPI increase to the, to the utility rates minus the electric. We also received notice from Republic Services that the, the recycling, those that participate in recycling, that cost will go up by their CPI index. It's a different index, it's 1.8%, and so I added those changes into the fee schedule. It's not a very big increase, but it is an increase. And then the Development Services Department reviewed all of their fees, and if you have any questions on that one, you know, we have members of the Development Services here that can explain that, they went through that with their staff, and so, those are the, those are the three increases we put on the fee schedule. So, we would need to adopt that fee schedule resolution.
So, I'm confused, I thought we were on a public hearing for...
Oh, did we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
We closed the public hearing, remember you made the motion that he could go in his first...
Oh, so would you change, okay.
We moved number seven, we moved number seven up, 'cause it, 'cause it deals with the budget we just passed.
So do we have questions on the fee schedules? I, I know for Development Services, I had questions, there seem to be some significant increases here, so if you, maybe Jill could speak to us about that, kind of the rationale, and how that would, how these adjustments compare to other cities for the similar services?
You want us to pull it up, so you, if you have a specific question, or you want her to just go through that?
Yeah, why don't, why don't you put it up?
So we, we did compare, and just as a general statement, we have not, I mean, with the exception of new fees that have come in with new process, we have not updated our development fees for nearly 20 years. So, there's been some iron in that there, but we have not done a thorough overview of, and so, and we noticed with comparing the other cities, it's evident that we have not increased. So we did a comparison between American Fork, Elk Ridge, Genola, Lehigh, Linden, Mapleton, Salem, Saniquin, Spanish Fork, and Springville. So we have reached out to all of those communities to get a copy of their fee schedule for their development fees, as well as their building fees. And so that is what we used as a, as our gauge, as we looked at our different fees for each process. Probably the most significant are maybe annexation. Some of them, we kept the same. One in particular, we lowered, zone change, we actually lowered to be consistent with some of the other cities. But for, as an example, our preliminary plat fees for subdivision are $350 base fee and $40 per lot. I'm not gonna use Elk Ridge as an example, because there's a, I mean, well, straight up there, $3,000 base fee, $50 per lot. But looking at some other cities that, for example, Mapleton is $770 up to 20 lots, $975 up to 40 lots, $1,275 for more than 40 lots, and then $45 per lot beyond 50 lots. Salem is 544 plus 112 per lot. Saniquin, they have a really interesting formula that they use. But Spanish Fork, which I know a lot of the times we look, we, we look at what Spanish Fork's doing, their base fee is $1,373, and then if your development is up to 75 lots, it's $84 per lot. If it's 76 to 200 lots, it's 50, and then if it's 200 plus, goes down to 22. So, Springville is $685 for the first five lots, and then they add on additional, each additional lot. So we're still, we still felt like by adding, I believe we added, what did we put on? $500, we're saying $500 base, so we're adding $150 to the base fee, and then instead of $40 per lot, we're asking for $50 per lot. So, I don't know if there was anyone in particular, but we, we did compare with other cities to see where we fall in line, and some of them, we were right where we needed to be. We felt that we were very competitive with other cities, and so we either left them the same, or in the case of zone change, we reduced it. But looking at annexation, looking at subdivision, looking at agreements, agreements we're not even charging for. Most communities are charging, that if there's an annexation agreement, a development agreement, a furlough agreement, something that requires additional review, preparation, legal review, they are charging for that. And so we are adding those ones, but the rest are already included in our fee schedule, and we look to other cities. Recognizing that would be a question, so... And then it also helped us to, to reevaluate, you know, our process. I mean, for example, we took out our pre-construction meeting application fee. It's only $15, but we felt that that is a cost that would probably be absorbed with the, either the site plan fee or the subdivision fee. So, some of them we've removed as well. Concept plans were removed, because we've started our new, we've started our new development process, and so we do more development meetings, where they just come in on Mondays, we discuss with them, we don't charge them. You know, it's just a general discussion about different development purposes.
What would the, the investigative fee of 250, what kind of services does that cover?
So that's currently, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna change that. That's already $250 now. That is if you had a large, well, Highland View development, for example, that you'll be having that work session on July 5th. They are coming in, they've got 100 acres, they're proposing 500 and something units. They wanna get a general idea from the planning commission and city council in a work session setting of are we moving in the right direction before we start to invest a lot of time and money and effort into preparing plans? And so it is not, approval is not given at all. It is just an opportunity for them to come and have staff review it, and city council to, to provide some direction, but it is not approval.
Okay. Other questions from the council?
Yeah, I'm not too smart, but I had a hard time just following this, because there were lots of stuff that was crossed out, and I didn't see where it really went someplace else, so I just had a really hard time trying to understand that. Some of I can see where it's changed, but we have lots of things that are just totally crossed out, and I don't know where...
Is that because we're just getting rid of it, like that?
Yeah, all of that we're getting rid of.
Just getting rid of?
Yeah.
If it said, I noticed up here it said moved, like on the investigative, oops.
Yeah, someone said moved, I just can't follow some of that.
Yeah, so...
Having a hard time following.
Yeah, so there is some, and, you know, and I guess we could've put, you know, deleted, so you knew that it wasn't relocated. But yeah, Kim did try to indicate that it was relocated to another section in the fee schedule of indicating that.
So is that what that moved, it's up there?
One, one thing you can do on your electronic copy, I think Kim was trying to make it more readable.
Right.
But what you could do is click up where the, the mark changes, you can go up and put, you know, you can accept that, and it takes all those lines out, so it shows you what's just in there. I, I didn't do that either, but you can do that, so you can see it better.
And you don't have to accept it, you just said final, view final, or something like that, and it, it'll take all the changes out. They're still there. Once you accept it, it, it...
It takes it out.
Yeah. So, there's step, step processes that will adjust this, so you can see what it actually looks like.
Yeah, she had also prepared this document, which I know is not included in your packet, because I know typically we put the revisions right in the schedule and show what's underlined, but she actually, I think this one's a little bit easier to read, but again, we didn't, we can give it to you. But it goes here, and it says, you know, what the fee is, what the current fee is, and then here's what the proposed fee is. So if it was deleted text, it's very clear right here, it says deleted text. If it changed, you know, she indicates, was it changed, it'd stay the same, or what the proposed increase is.
That would, that would've helped me a lot.
So, we email you?
Yeah, and we can still email you a copy of this, but I don't know how you, you know, how you feel about accepting the, the schedule amendments without seeing that, or if you want to see that before you actually make a decision on it.
I, I, I don't know if there's any more discussion, but I don't have any.
What, what I'd like to do, and if everyone wants to go along with this, but I, I would like to approve the CPI part of it, 'cause that's very understandable, but just table the rest of the fee schedule till, so we can see, have a little more clarification.
So you wanna table the development services part?
Right.
And approve the rest?
Right.
Because one, one of the rest, one of the other you did mention was the recycling.
Right, yeah, my fine. I'll, I'll add, except for the development services. Does that, I'd make that motion if everybody's fine with that. And I'm not saying that I'm not agree with it, I just don't understand it.
No, I understand, I understand.
Well, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, is this one we would have to do voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, so, Brian?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that portion's been tabled, okay. Next item on our agenda is the resolution offering the city treasurer to write off certain uncollectible debt. Alice, we've got...
Oh, wait.
There's one over for that.
Yeah, my budget amendment.
Oh, your budget amendment.
Number three.
That's right, that's right.
I'll make the motion that we go into public hearing for budget amendment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're in public hearing. Sorry, I was gonna cut you short.
No, you're good. I would love for you to skip over, but I don't think anybody would be happy that I could get them their money that they needed. Okay, so we'll go through this really quick. So, the first one is for our Class C road fund. We had a 60s project that went over budget, there was a lot of, what do you call those, Travis?
Change orders.
Change orders, thank you. I swear, I've got part-timers already. Um, yeah, so there were some change orders, we went a little bit over budget, but because they've changed the funding on the Class C road fund, that was when they had their special, session last year, the legislature did, they fixed the calculation. So I've been watching that revenue come in, and did you all see my projections included in the budget? Even if we collected what we did last year, we would collect 690,000, I only budgeted 660,000. So, I'm asking for an increase based on the projected revenue that we'll receive for that, so new revenue for that one. The wellness program, what I do on this one is, whatever revenue we bring in, I just allocate to the expense fund, so that's revenue-based. The library donations, they received donations, they need to increase their program account. The senior citizen, that's the same way, whatever membership money they bring in, I give them, them that budget in their expense account. So it's new revenue as well. Interest earnings, we are using to cover two mistakes that I made, that I mentioned earlier. So for the fire, I did not calculate the 457 contribution on the animal control officer, I did not use the right percentage.
Sarah, you didn't have to put your name in there.
I, I'll be the first to admit any mistake I have, and I'll own it. So I made some huge mistakes right there, but we have to cover those shortages. I just wanted you to know that was me and nobody else. So the Petit Neat Christmas Expo, whatever revenue we bring in, we allocate to the expenses kind of the same way as the donations. Janine has brought in $635 for the Christmas Expo, had to give her that money in the expense account. Same with the Petit Neat Antique Expo, it's $835 that she brought in, we're giving to her expense account. The next one, so, what happened is Water has some, had a project that did not have to happen, and they would like to use that money to buy a roller. Is that right? Am I calling it right, Travis, a roller for streets? And what they're gonna do is they're gonna buy Class Cs, like B and C Road Fund, they're gonna buy its roller, and then B and C Fund is gonna buy a new roller for that. So that's what that is. So we're selling to another department, so they can buy any one. If you have questions, just feel free to holler anytime. Then, we had the surplus of property sale, I included that list as well, so what I'm doing is, whatever revenue was brought in, so like the cat loader for the Class C road fund, it's an increase in revenue, so I'm increasing their expenses as well. So all of these are based on new revenue that was brought in, that wasn't budgeted for, because I don't budget for surplus sale until it happens, and then I give that budget authority. And... And, there we go. The next one that's on there is the water reimbursable by bond. What happened is when we refunded our bond, we had a bond still outstanding that we were drawing down on to finish the well up at the golf course. And the well project was done and they still had money that we had, you know, to be drawn down. And because the project was done, what Zions did is they looked at how much interest we had paid previously encountered that as an expense, so they gave us this money to put into our water fund. So, we have 245,000 dollars that we received from the loan, the drawing down, it's like we just would have drawn it all down, so we, that was the excess that we haven't drawn down. We got that, I just put it in their, in their fund to see if we could get projects done. Brent came to me and he thinks that the best use of that funds is to buy a jet truck. I'm a little bit apprehensive about that. I, first off, I want to trust what they say. It's not that I don't trust them, they know better than me, but if we're using bond money that was obtained to do infrastructure, I would like to use it for infrastructure, but Brent has some really good points as to why he wants, he needs that jet truck for the water department. So, we'll let Travis. A jet truck is like a VAC truck, cleans lines, sucks water, a big, a new one. So, my husband works for Polos City, they just bought one and it was about 480,000 dollars to buy a brand new one. So, it's a big piece of equipment. My, my other issue is the sewer department is going to be replacing their jet truck in 2019 hopefully, that's on their CIP list. And I, I don't know if they can wait, the water department can wait till 2019 and buy that one? I don't know, I just, this is something that you guys need to weigh in on and.
I guess I have to think about some things like that is, I doubt they're used all the time, so maybe we can give other municipalities some share or some of these bigger items that we maybe use a couple of days a week or something like that.
We, we have two jet trucks, one with the storm drain and one with the sewer department. So, when, when the water department has a leak or something, they have, may arrange when they can to use the sewer's jet truck. It, it helps the water department because you don't have to tear open the street as much because you could suck out the stuff. It, my understanding, Travis, you'll probably have to talk, it, it tears it up pretty good because you're sucking on rocks and stuff like that, so, you know, we didn't want to ruin some of that.
How, how much do you use a jet truck for water, Travis? You don't use it?
Well, for water, I don't know for sure, but for sewer, Jeff uses it every day.
Right, but for water?
And for water, it, they, they would use it on leaks and then they would also use it on some water meters when, you know, if they go to replace a water meter and it, the cans full, then they, that's how they would suck that out, but, you know, would it be used every day? Probably not, but it's, you know, it's hard because to share equipment with other communities, like we just had a meeting with Woodland Hills this week and they wanted to borrow our camera truck. We're like, no, it's a 180,000 dollar piece of equipment, you're not going to just borrow it. Because then when they break in or something breaks, we're, we're stuck paying for that and some of the community broke it. So, most communities are that same way, they don't, you know, it's hard to share equipment like that because somebody's using it and it seems like you always come out on the short end, somebody has.
Well, if you, if you bought it together, everybody has to share the cost of many, you know, repairs to it. Anyway, just something about.
What other department has one?
Storm drain, they, they bought Jeff's old one, so it's, I'm not exactly sure what year it is, but it's at least 10 to 12 years old. And it doesn't work there as good as the newer one, but it does work, so they do use it, but not as much as obviously Jeff does.
So, what's your recommendation? What's, what's staff think?
I'm a little on the fence. I've talked to the water department, obviously Brent and some of his employees, they really think it would help them. So, in that regard, I'm backing my employees that that would be a useful piece of equipment, but, you know, we have needs all over, we could, we could use it to help start the main line, you know, replacement of Main Street. There's, there's other areas we can do it, that's, it's a balancing act, so I'm probably a little more on the fence in these areas, but, you know, I'd be great if we had it. I think we'd use it and it'd be a good piece of equipment, but we could also spend that money on some infrastructure in other places, so. I know that's a little wobbly.
Has he ever not been able to get one when he needed it from the other two departments?
Yeah, because like Kent, you know, theirs doesn't get used as much, but he likes to not lend out his equipment, he likes to send an operator with it, which is, you know, because you have to have a CDL to drive those pieces of equipment, I think they're that big. And so, you know, Brent right now, I think has, I think just one employee that has a CDL, so that would be something, they would have to get more employees to do that so that they didn't have the money with just one guy, but, you know, like I said, Jeff, his guys are out cameraing and using their back truck every day just to keep the lines clean and so that we don't have backup, so.
But, like I said before, they know better than I do. I just, I know on the CIP list or the construction in progress list, I should use acronyms, the five-year plan that we had, I didn't see a jet truck on there. And we have projects that we had in this year's budget that we don't have on this year's budget. So, that was a concern to me and I, I'm not saying do one way or the other, I'm just voicing my concern. That's what I'm here for, right? But, let me pull up the CID budget. Can I pull up? I can shut down. So, you can see right here, this is their five-year plan for the section in grade, that's this 2018 budget that we're adopting. They have 75,000 to replace that ERT, ERTs on water meters. I guess that helps us to be able to read without manually reading them, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's the part that when they do the drive-by is that they get the data off of, that you can see on top of the camera in your yard.
Electronic read technology.
There you go. Thank you. I didn't know what that stood for, so thanks, Mark. We have the 1140 East Waterline for a system deficiency. Travis mentioned that these came from our impact fee study and these are deficiencies that were listed in the plan. So, I saw those and I said 250,000 could knock off some of these projects. So, they know best, Brent feels like that's where the money is best spent to get a jet truck. That's great, I'll support him in that, but I just want to make sure we look at all angles and determine what's really best with that money.
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to come up and comment on these amendments to our budget? No one? So, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Do we need to vote on this again individually?
Voice, voice to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, that's right. Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any comments, discussion from the council before we have a motion?
I didn't get to the last two, but you can see that the police had a grant come in and donations, so those are the last two.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to the fiscal year 2016, '17 budget.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This one needs to be voiced, real call. Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our next item now, now, so we get to the amendments or the authorizing the city treasurer to write off certain uncollectible debts.
So, we'd like to excuse Cheryl Hobbs, the treasurer, at this time for long deserved couple of days off that we had to force her to do, so I said I'd come and represent her to tell about our write-offs since I have a lot to do with that during the year. So, summarize for write-offs for 2016 and our fiscal year 2017. And you've got in your packets a list of, so in write-offs, there ended up being 12 bankruptcies, 89 that were sent to collections and six that were deceased. So, a total of 107 accounts that we ended up, well, needing to write off, you know, for a total of a bad debt of 54,654.69. And that's just a normal type thing. And we decided this year that our, with our write-offs, with our collections, like other cities, that as soon as we sent them to collections, that for that next fiscal year, they would be put on the list to be written off. So, they hadn't done that in previous years, so, so whether that put a little bit more write-offs, but, so, and we had to do some changes right before we came to, so sorry about that final memo we sent you because this week we had received a collections check from our Charrington firm that also gave us like a 1,072 that we were able to, you know, that was paid from their collections. And we also had two people within the last little bid that had passed away that we needed to, so it kind of, you know, balanced it out there. So, looking at the next, the payments arrangements that were paid in full this fiscal year, we had a total amount of accounts of 23,877.96. And this is where we work with the people. We try to keep their payment, their payments to six months and under if we can, but with the larger amounts, you know, we sometimes work with these guys, you know, so that we can help them out. And so, we had what, that amount that we were, was able to be paid off rather than be sent to collections. And looking at the oldest payoff amount came from someone that started in October 15th of 2014, so it shows you that some of them we, we work with and as long as they're making monthly payments, then, you know, we work with them on that. And it saves us, you know, sending them to collections and adding on a 35% and that sort of thing, so. As of right now, we have 17 open accounts that we're working with for a balance of 9,451.55 as of June 13th. And then other than that, I don't know if you have any questions on this or if that looked good to you or if you, you know, we really get a lot of people that are very appreciative that we do work with them. And so, rather than being sent to collections, so. Anyway, so I'd like to present this for you guys to be able to let us write this off before the end of the month so that it can help Sarah in her calculations for the fiscal year, so present that to you guys.
Thank you, guys, you're doing a great job. I just have one question. It seemed like there was maybe 15 or so accounts that are like 1,500 dollars to 2,000 dollars. How do they, if it's just residents, how do they get that high without getting shut off?
A lot of times, they have been shut off and, you know, they do get a 5% penalty every month of the balance left unpaid. Sometimes, I don't know, it just, I mean, it surprises us too how they, that happens. I mean, then, or they have a six-month water read that hasn't been on there and it's huge, but, yeah, it's kind of sad how that happens really quickly.
Some of them might be penalties.
Yeah, penalties.
So, some of those penalties, that's, that's not really a loss for revenue, it's just something, it'd be interesting to see how much is penalties that we're writing off and not just the actual cost, but.
Yeah, we could try to calculate that for you.
It'd just be interesting because it's not really even a loss at all, penalties, so.
Oh, but it does cost a lot to send, send people out to tag and to shut off and that sort of thing, you know, those, some of those penalty, I mean.
Well, the shut off, yeah, that's.
A 25 dollar tag fee, I mean, it takes a lot for those guys to go out and shut off and then have to go back out and turn them back on and that sort of thing, so, yeah. So, any questions I can help you or direct to the treasurer? Maybe we'll figure out something like that for you on percentage of penalties that are on that for you, so.
There's some high numbers.
Yes. And some of them are businesses, so that's another thing that you need to look at too, some are businesses and.
At, at least a couple have been bankruptcies that have come in.
Oh, yeah, and then they tell us a certain point to cut off and, yeah, that adds up too, yes. Thanks, Mark. We have Payless that's kind of bankruptcy right now. We're hoping that they haven't, you know, they didn't build up quite so much, so we're hoping, yeah.
Theirs was one of the lowest.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions? Do we have a motion?
To let us write these out? Thank you.
I'll make the motion that.
There, there's a resolution in there, if you want to just authorize the resolution allowing the treasurer to write off the uncollectible debts as described.
Okay, I, I say what Mark said. I'm just amazed though at how many people do not pay.
Tell me, it's, it's a lot of work to chasing them down. We do, you know, we give them like three months after their termination, we send them letters, we call them, and then after that point is when we finally send them to collections. We give them all opportunities to try to call us up, make payment arrangements before we, you know. And then we set up payment arrangements and it's like on a monthly basis. If they didn't pay it, we still give them another chance and call them up and, yes, so. I just want you to know that we do try every opportunity to, to give them the chance to pay and, and.
And do we ever shut off city services to them?
Oh, yes.
Do we?
Oh, totally.
And leave it off?
And leave it off.
If they don't come?
If they don't come in and, and pay their past due plus a $50 reconnect fee, we also will waive the $50 reconnect fee if they pay both the past due and the current amounts, we waive that fee. And we've, you know, looked at other cities and how they've worked it and how well, and this is something that our department has come up with, but, you know, we try to help people in need and that, so.
And I think it'd be, I think it would be good too if we kind of kept track of repeat offenders.
We, we can give, we can give you, yeah. We, we recognize names on a month-to-month basis. And it's sad because if they could just get ahead, then they would not get those extra fees, you know?
Right.
And we also give them, tell them about programs, like the heat program through the county and the state that help them out. We have, you know, the Goffe Center will sometimes help those in need, single mothers and stuff, and so we try to, and, and any church organizations will also help out. So, we try to tell them, you know, ways that will help get ahead so they, they can get that bill paid off, you know, and not get those charges.
I realize these people are struggling, but have we, do we have, if they get shut off, do we make them do a deposit like a new customer and have to do a deposit?
They usually have a deposit on file, you know, but if they ever terminate it, we apply it to the final bills or we have a co-signer that if they don't pay off that balance, then it, after the three months or it's transferred onto the co-signer's account. So, those are, we have backups there.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I was wondering if we voted.
I said what Mark said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Actually, does that have to be roll call? That, that one also needs to be a roll call.
Okay, well, roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the deferral agreement for AFFCU Payson subdivision, Mark.
Um, this, this property is to the east of Walmart parking lot. It's to the south of, south and east of the pharmacy that's on the east side of the road there. It's in the Marises, it's south of there. And they, what, what triggered the need to put in improvements is they, they purchased the property from Payson Fruit Growers and subdivided it, not intending to develop until 2020, so three years out. But the subdivision triggered these developments. The, we went back and forth with just some minor changes. One of which, the attorney for the owner of the properties indicated that there, he didn't think there was any onsite municipal improvements. He, there's a, there was actually a sewer line that comes interior to all of those properties going off 800, and it's a main, city main line. So there are manholes all the way in, interior to, in front of Marises and all the way down to there, and so once he understood that, we were able to work it out, we just put in, indicated public improvements, and set up just improvements, and the, the date of 2020. They anticipate, starting actually in 2019, but they're giving themselves a little leeway there. Everything else is the same, so we're just averting the, the municipal improvements until they actually develop.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution, the deferral agreement is the AFFCU Payson subdivision.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. This doesn't have to be roll call. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I keep wanting to ask versus anybody opposed. Okay, the next is the boundary line agreement for Wagon Wheel Park and the High Line Canal Company Building, Travis, it's up to you here.
Yeah, Mayor, Pro Tim and Council, I'll just give you a quick update before I start on the PI question, I talked to Jesse in the water department, and Monday into Tuesday, we did have a problem with the, the channel coming down the canyon got blocked. And so they diverted some water out of the PI system for an old field to try to keep them whole. And that caused the pressure to drop, so it should be fixed, we're not doing that anymore, but that, that could've been what caused some pressure drops, so.
Does that help, Don?
I'll, I'll, I'll see what happens tomorrow night.
It should've been fixed by yesterday morning, they said, but we'll, we'll see if there's any issues, because I'm not aware of any other issues that we have.
Well, it's fixed on your street, I know.
I live like two blocks away, so.
Okay.
Getting to that item, the, the, in the older areas of the city, if you ever get on the Utah County parcel map and look, all of the parcels are way off there, you know, they can be off by 20, 30 feet on where the actual buildings and fences and that are, so. Where High Line Canal is selling their, you know, their older building that's right by the Wagon Wheel Park, they, they wanted to have a boundary line agreement and fix that, so we've checked it with our city surveyor and made sure that the property lines, you know, there, there wasn't any property lost or gained, but that the, the lines were just shifted where they were supposed to, so that's all this is, is just a boundary line agreement to make sure that that's in the correct place, so. There was a map, I know, provided in the, in the packet, so if you had any questions, but the, where the parking spaces are is what the city owns along with the park, and then the access is actually, you know, on the building, the High Line Canal, so we'll, we'll also be doing an agreement probably next council meeting to do a share, to keep the access and the parking agreement, kind of like it is just to formalize it, but today it's just to do the boundary line, so.
Any questions? Do we have a motion? Your turn. You can shine here, Linda.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution on the boundary line agreement, boundary line agreement for the Wagon Wheel Park and the High Line Canal.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We don't have, we've already covered the fee schedule, we did have a closed session, but we're gonna delay that, is that correct?
Yeah, we don't need to hold one.
Do we need to table it, or do we need to just not cover it? Okay, so seeing that there's nothing else on the agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Then, Don?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, and I know, you're gonna hit it, okay.